This is a work session, Marquette Township Board. Today's Monday, January 6, 2025. It's 5:00 PM. And let's do a roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Iverson's excused and absent. Trustee Ketta?
Here.
Trustee Leighton?
Here.
Trustee Winslow?
Present.
Treasurer Rickauer?
Here.
And Clerk Rattar is here, and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Staff President is Major Kangas. Our Attorney Roger Zappa is here. And Planning Commission Member Denny Ferraro is here.
Great, thank you. So as I said, this is a work session, so there'll be no motions or anything tonight. It's informational. Um, I did type up a couple notes, just so everybody can kind of get up to speed. Is there any public comment? Anybody want to throw any words out before we get started? Okay. Uh, we're talking about Brownfield. And our Marquette County Brownfield Coordinator is here. Anne Drew. And let me just get you up to speed a little bit. The township has five acres of property adjacent to Schwemwee Park, which was a park that was donated by the Schweman and Woodbridge family. For a while, the west corner of 492 Brookton Road was used for residence to bring first Wednesday drop-off materials. There was interest from a couple of developers, and at one point, the property was listed with the Realtor. A purchase agreement was written with one of those developers for a housing project. Unfortunately, the developer asked for conditions that township government cannot legally provide, so the deal dissolved. The board left the property vacant, weighing options, including the expansion of the park for parking and restroom facilities. It was decided that if the property was sold at some point, the proceeds would be applied to the debt for the township facilities, which are now in the process of being restructured, the debt is, for the fire hall, public works in this township hall. Uh, enter Renovari. Renovari has worked with the Township Planning Commission with a proposal for a 48-unit PUD housing project, which is a planned unit development. Renovari signed a one-year option agreement on the five acres on April 10th of '23, which stipulates that the property not be marketed, but there is no purchase agreement to this point. The option agreement has been renewed twice, currently expiring in April 10th of this year. The two $5,000 non-refundable deposits would be credited to the $500,000 purchase price. In addition to grants, Renovari would be using tax increment financing through the Brownfield Development Authority. Considering the extensive and complicated rules and regulations of this funding, Executive Director Anne Drew asked if she could speak to the township board and explain the intricacies, as well as the long-term financial impact to the township. So since we had some kind of new board members, I want to make sure everybody's on the same page as where we are. Anne? The floor is yours.
Well, thank you, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Most of you I know, or have been before in the past. We were actually here in March of 2024 with this same presentation. I'm not going to go through the whole thing again. You've seen it once, but I do want to... I didn't delete any slides. I thought I would go through some of them maybe quicker, more quickly than others. Because it is a complicated tool, and sometimes it takes boards and community groups several times hearing about the same thing before it clicks and they really get their hands around what it means. It's a very new tool. So new in terms of statutes in the state of Michigan, right? So it's only been around about a year and a half. We call it Housing TIF, and it was basically an amendment to the Brownfield Act, which allowed for housing projects to now be Brownfield projects. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that means exactly. There have been plans adopted in the state, not a lot. The Michigan State Housing Development Authority is involved in them. We still have a lot of unanswered questions with them, so everybody's still trying to figure out this tool. This is the first Housing TIF plan that our county Brownfield Authority has looked at. I know in the city of Marquette, who has their own municipal Brownfield Authority, they have adopted one Housing TIF plan so far. That is for the office-to-residential conversion of Chippewa Square. So it's really new, and we're all kind of still trying to figure out how this tool works. I want to emphasize just one thing with the county Brownfield Authority, which I represent. We function a little bit different than a municipal authority, like the city of Marquette has its own Brownfield Authority. A lot of times, when plans come to the city authority, they're making decisions on whether they support that project in the city of Marquette, right? Whether philosophically they agree with it or not. Our county authority, we really function more as though we're representing all of you. We're representing the townships and the cities that we bring plans to. We look at ourselves as the tool. We make sure when we see a plan that it's in compliance with Act 381, that the developer's not doing anything that's illegal, that everything is as the act says it should be. But in terms of whether your community supports this project, we're really bringing that to you, and you are required to concur with the plan before it goes into place, because this is your community. We don't want to bring you a plan that you don't support. And really, that is kind of why we're going out of order a little bit with what we're doing today and having this workshop, to really gauge what your interest is, what concerns you have with the plan before we really take it any further. And I will say this multiple times, this plan is in draft form. It's a work in progress. Jill and I spent some time today going through the tables. I'm really going to give you kind of a worst-case scenario today, and we're really looking to get feedback from you. This is not my presentation. This was put together by Fishbeck. I think Jeff Hawkins with Fishbeck was here in March when we presented this the first time. I did see that Susan Wenzlech, who also works at Fishbeck, is on Zoom. So yeah, we just updated a little bit. So first of all, I wanted to start about why are we even talking about this? Why is this an issue? I think we all know, but I should never assume that. Housing, finding housing in Marquette is a challenge. It's not only a challenge in Marquette, it's a challenge in Marquette County, even on the west end, where I reside and where my child is looking for a house. It's become a challenge. I looked on Zillow last week when I was working on updating this presentation. A two-person household in Marquette County at 120% area median income, and I'll talk about that later, what that means. But we use that as kind of the goal for missing middle housing or workforce housing is 120 AMI. So a two-person household at 120% AMI in Marquette County is making $83,000... I can't, I'm old.
Five twenty.
It tells us a five or a nine. Looking to buy a home with a $30,000 down payment and $1,000 in monthly debt, they qualify for a home at 227, 233. And on January 3rd, when I looked on Zillow, there was one house in Marquette. I think it was in Marquette Township. I was specifically looking. That was under that dollar amount. Those are the three that I could find in the township that are on Zillow right now. It's really hard. You all know. You have, you know, be it children or coworkers or friends, it's really hard to find houses in that range, and that's why we're talking about this. So a couple of examples close to home. Antonio and I, and you, if you don't know Antonio, Antonio is the housing specialist and the new county land bank director. We built a couple houses last year with some grant funding. And so these are actual costs. The two that we built last year, there's some stats there. They're small houses, right? No basements. One's on a crawl space, one's on a slab. We had a grant through the MISTHA Missing Middle Program on each of these homes for $80,000. One of them, the one on the top, is still on the market right now. If you know anybody looking for a lovely little home, it's a great deal. We will connect you with our real estate agent. But that is priced at $194.9. We just dropped the price. You can see what the cost to construct was and why we have an issue. Even with that $80,000 grant, we're still selling that one at a loss. The one on the bottom, a little bit unique, smaller, stick-built. We wanted to do one modular, one stick-built, see how they compared in terms of ease of construction and et cetera. That one was more expensive to build. Mainly, a large portion of why it was more expensive to build was because we had to use prevailing wage because of this grant program. And so that one sold for $212. Again, that one had the $80,000 grant, and it sold at a loss of $30,000. How were we able to do that? Land bank? How are you building these houses and taking those hits? We actually had two the prior year that we sold at an excess. And so the four together in this program net out to zero. But you can see without these sources of funding, this just doesn't work to build houses in this price range. So why do we need housing incentives? You know, we talked about it just a couple minutes ago from a local perspective, but this is just kind of a summary of, you know, why we need these homes being built, and it's a statewide problem, really. This is, again, some just information from Wexford County. The only reason I put it up there is that statement at the bottom. If you're a builder, you can't make money building homes in this price range. So a short history of TIF in Michigan. I'm not even going to read this slide. I'm going to try to wing it, just because I don't want to go through these verbatim. But TIF, as we know it, has always been cleaning up contaminated sites, right? And tearing down blighted buildings and all of those things. And in a traditional sense of Brownfield, that's what people think of, right? Is those types of projects. But as I said, in 2023, they amended the act to allow for housing because of the housing shortage in Michigan. So this is just kind of a picture. Brownfield basics and TIF basics. You have a property that's worth this today. You invest in that property. It's worth this tomorrow. You're able to capture that increase in those taxes instead of it going to the township and the county and the schools and everybody it goes to. It's captured by the Brownfield Authority, and those funds are used to reimburse that developer for Brownfield-eligible expenses. Really trying to put these problem sites on a level playing field with a site that doesn't have a problem. That's kind of always how I've explained it to people is, in fact, I use Marquette Township as the example. Like, you can build on that green space out in Marquette Township that doesn't have any issues, or you can try to deal with this complicated downtown structure. And so we try to incentivize that, to basically incentivize land reuse, right? So that's just explaining that. Again, I went over this, or we went over this the last time we were here, but we have had a couple of Brownfield plans adopted in Marquette Township. If any of you are new board members and haven't seen these. The oldest one that we've adopted is the Beryl and Beam property. And so that was an example of, they had some interior demo, asbestos abatement, things like that, that needed to be done on the site. That Brownfield plan, trying to remember the last time I looked, it was a short-ish plan in terms of Brownfield world. It was short. I think that it's probably got another four or five years, somewhere in that range, before that's reimbursed in full. And then, of course, the township will start collecting taxes on that new and improved property. The other project that was a little more recent was the former Senex Station on the corner of Wright Street and US 41. And that is kind of, I would say, a Brownfield plan in progress, because as you know, the front parcel has been sold and Discount Tire was built. And so we've got some tax increment that's coming in that I'm reimbursing the developer for when they pay their taxes. But the back parcel is still vacant, so the taxable increment that they were expecting on that site really isn't to its full potential right now. And so, you know, I'm secretly waiting and hoping that somebody builds something there soon so that we can get back to the expected timeframe that we thought this plan would be. So a property must be a Brownfield to be eligible. And I talked about kind of the historic things that we think of when we talk about Brownfield, blighted, contaminated. But again, we added housing property, and it really is frankly a game changer. So this is the definition. What is housing property? One or more units of residential housing to be constructed, rehab, or otherwise designed to be a dwelling. If you're doing anything on a site related to housing, it's potentially Brownfield-eligible. So you have to have a demonstrated need. We have a demonstrated need. We had a target market analysis done. You all contributed to that effort. Thank you. So we have a document showing that we have a need for housing in Marquette County. These are some of the eligible activities. You can do environmental cleanup. You can do demolition. Site prep and public infrastructure are two important ones that apply to Housing TIF that could come into play with this particular Brownfield plan that we're talking about, okay? So if you think about that site that they're looking at developing, there's a lot of site preparation that has to go on there. And Jill will talk about why it's kind of complicated, some of the issues they run into with the site, and also public infrastructure. You've got to extend your water and sewer and other utilities. Writing the Brownfield plans, administrative costs of the Brownfield Authority are also components of these plans. I'm going to skim over some of this. This is really getting into kind of weeds about the... how to calculate the housing subsidy. So I want to talk about what that housing subsidy is, but I'm really not going to get into the weeds about how to calculate it. But essentially, I talked about all those things that can be eligible, all the things that we traditionally thought of as Brownfield, environmental cleanup, asbestos abatement, demolition, all of those things. Add to that your public infrastructure and site prep that we just talked about. In addition to that, in a housing plan, that cost to construct that exceeds the market value. So I showed you on that slide the houses that we built and how we weren't able to sell them for what it costs to construct them. That loss that those developers are taking can be a Brownfield expense. So through tax increment financing, you can support attainable housing in that way. Does that make sense? Do you want me to explain that again? Because that is also a component of this Brownfield plan, so I want to make sure everybody understands that. It really is the difference between the cost to construct and the price that a developer can sell that home for. It also applies to rentals. I'm sparing you from talking about rentals because this project that we're talking about today is a for-sale product. But that, we refer to it as the PDL, the Potential Development Loss. These developers, you know, I threw on that comment on the one slide, contractors and developers can't make money doing this work. This is a way to incentivize them to get them to build houses in this price range by reimbursing them for that loss. I'm really not going to go over these because they're just scary-looking. We talked about water and sewer connections, infrastructure site prep. Again, that's unique to Housing TIF in some regards. So again, TIF must be approved by a local Brownfield Authority and sometimes the state of Michigan. So sometimes the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, or MISTHA, gets involved in these plans if you're attempting to capture the school portion of the tax increment. This plan that we're talking about with Renovari does expect to be presented to MISTHA. So TIF is essentially being used to fund the cost gap that a developer has on these projects. This is the process in a nutshell, and I added that red in there just to kind of talk about our process specifically with this plan. So the developer proposes a project and develops a plan. As I said, we're working on that. We've got a draft plan, draft tables and draft narrative. Typically, the Brownfield Authority considers that plan. Then it brings it to the township or city. They concur with that plan. And then it finally goes to the County Board of Commissioners because we are a county authority, and the county board approves that plan. As I said, in this case, we're kind of coming and doing this workshop as a kind of a first look at this project before we even take it to the Brownfield Authority. The Brownfield Authority has talked conceptually about the project, but hasn't seen... Actually, I think I did share a draft plan with them at their last meeting, but they did not vote on it. They wanted the feedback from the township. We wanted the feedback from the township, so that's really why we're here today. So let's talk about missing middle workforce. What does that mean? And I think we covered this last year, but I'll cover it again. What is area median income? For a one-person household in Marquette County, $62,115, most of the housing incentives right now, I say most. We all know that there are low-income housing tax credit projects, LITC they call them, that focus on the low, low income. Most of the missing middle workforce-type programs are focusing on people who are in the 80% to 120% AMI range. And what that means here in Marquette County for a one-person household is $48,000 to $73,000. I'm quite sure that we all know people that fall in that range. This is not low-income housing. This is workforce housing for teachers, for administrative people. My son, who's a postal service worker. I mean, there's a lot of people that we know that fall into this range. A key thing to remember with Brownfield is that you will never get less money under a Brownfield plan than you currently get. Now, of course, you own this site that we're talking about, so you're getting nothing right now, right? And the whole key with Brownfield is that if you invest in it, if you provide the incentive through your delayed millage levy, you reap the rewards of that down the road. And if you didn't make that commitment and that incentive, you would never see those rewards. It's kind of the whole gist of Brownfield. So challenges with TIF. There is a limit with TIF on P- principal residence exemption properties. These are going to be principal residences. So there's a limited amount of school tax, the 18-mills the schools get, that these plans can adopt on PRE properties. Sometimes these are long plans. We're going to show you a 30-year, a plan with figures from a 30-year plan. That's a long time. Most of the Brownfield plans that I have worked on in Marquette County, I think we've done 10, I will maybe not be working when I see the end of them. So they're very long-term ideas. The affordability period, we're going to talk about that on a later slide because we do want to get your feedback on that. Is the subsidy reasonable? Is the community willing to do this? Are you willing to kind of go outside the box of traditional Brownfield and support housing in this way? Sometimes the scale is a question. If it's a very small project, it might not be worth it to go through this process. This is certainly not a small project with 48 units. And the local government might have costs serving those units before it takes in any tax revenue to service those units. That's just questions. Okay, so this particular project, again, I put "draft" in red to highlight that it's in draft form. Hopefully, you can see that at the top. This is really just shows of the 48 units that are planned to be built, kind of what they are. How many bedrooms, what style? And then that AMI amount is whether, what area median income are they going to be at? So you can see there's two units at 60% AMI, which would be considered a low income, if you're using those terms. The rest of those units that have a sales price there of $240, those were at 120% AMI. So those income figures that I showed you on that previous screen, those are the kinds of families that these would be marketed to. And then there are eight units that are market rate, that you can see have a higher sales price on them. So those are the sales prices. On the next column, I have the mortgage amount. So obviously, somebody at 60% area median income cannot afford a $240,000 home, right? So what kind of a mortgage can they afford? They can afford a $78,000 mortgage. They're going to need down payment assistance. And Jill's going to talk about that because she's more knowledgeable about that than I, and how they intend to raise those funds to provide that down payment assistance. The affordability period. So with MISTHA for this project, and because they would be getting a My Neighborhood Award, which we can talk about a little bit later, it's essentially a grant, there is a five-year affordability requirement. But beyond that five years, those folks could sell those homes, and they could sell at a market rate. So we do want to talk to and get kind of your input and thoughts on that. This is not a 30-year affordability project, and that's important to know. And Jill can speak to why that wouldn't work, but we definitely want to talk about that. So this, again, I would consider a worst-case scenario with a total project cost of $13.9 million. Of those costs, 8.2 are eligible for Brownfield. And I didn't get into the detail of what makes up that 18.2, but it's made up of some infrastructure work, some site prep work, and then that housing subsidy loss that we talked about. So the actual costs reimbursed through this 30-year Brownfield plan are $5.9 million. So you can see in this draft version, the developer is not being reimbursed in full. They're not getting that full 8.2. They're getting 5.9. Part of that is covered by this My Neighborhood Award, which we talked about. And Jill can speak to what the remainder of it is covered by. So how does that break down? Who is putting in what? State millage, $635,000. County millage, 1.8. Township millage, 2.2. So that's over that 30 years. Your Act 33 Fire Millage, because it is a special act, special assessment, is not captured by the plan. You would continue to receive that on this development. School and ISD, 1.1. That's the sinking fund only for Marquette schools. That is not their debt millage. Brownfield is not able to capture debt millage of any kind. And then the Heritage Trail, just under $50,000. So this is a total 30-year plan at this point. We are working through some details and scenarios, and there may be a possibility that gets shortened, but at this point, the draft we are looking at is 30 years. So what happens at the end of 30 years? The developer's reimbursed in full. We're looking at a taxable value for this project of just under $12 million. And what does that mean for your township in terms of taxes? You can see the breakdown right there. Who would be getting what at that point? So it's about $109,000 after that 30-year period. So again, the question would be, you can sell that to somebody, and it could sit vacant, and it's $500,000, so call it a taxable value of $250,000. And I think I wrote down, and I can't remember how much taxes that generates, but, you know, the key is you invest in this through your local millage, through the county's millage, and a little bit of state school millage. And it's an investment in that amount in 30 years instead of what you're getting now, either zero or getting now on a vacant piece of property, or getting now on selling it to somebody else, and they build four houses. Or, I mean, you can throw out any kind of a situation. But that is the tax revenue that you would be looking at. There are a lot of estimates being made. And I know one of the things that we need to do before we hash this out and bring it to the Brownfield Authority is talk with the assessor about, and look at the plans for the houses, and really come up with good estimates for what those assessments are going to look like so that we've got good projections in here. But it's a lot of guesses. You could have, you have heavily rollbacks on millages. You could vote in another mill, a new millage. That's part of the plan. It's really an estimate at this point. Okay, so I'm going to stop talking, and I'm going to let Jill go through the next few slides and hopefully answer any of the stuff I glossed over.
Do we want to stop and ask questions?
Or do you want to have any questions?
Let's wait and see. Does anybody have any technical questions about? I was going to say, there's got to be at least one.
Back in 1988, when Marquette Township had their TIF, it was just, it was a DDA TIF, nothing to do with this. You could capture basically everything, whatever the increment was. Then somewhere in the 90s, they changed that for opt-outs. So some of the taxing jurisdictions could elect not to have their taxes captured. Do you know if that applies to any of these? For example, the, you know, like the library?
It does not.
Okay.
No.
So there's no opt-out procedure then?
There is not, and it's actually kind of interesting for us as a county authority. We have to get your approval for this plan, and then the county. The city doesn't need the county's authority. So when the city does a Brownfield plan, they usually send them to me because I know Brownfield, and we have no ability to opt out of them. I mean, the board could go and speak their mind at their meeting, but we have no opt-out ability.
Because the obvious downside is it makes TIFs, that type of TIF, a lot less attractive because if they're going to opt out, all you're doing is capturing your own.
Yeah, and in fact, you can't pick and choose millages. You could do, and I've never done one or seen one, but you can do a Brownfield plan for like 50% of the millages across the board. You can do that, but you can't pick and choose and say, this millage is going to be included and that isn't. The nice thing about, and you know, I'll go back to my 12-years-as-county treasurer, like DDAs are great because they're there, and then they're there forever, right? And I know your DDA is set up a little bit differently than like the city's DDAs and other... And I know your DDA is set up a little bit differently than like the city's DDAs and others, but DDAs, once they're there and that zone has developed, you're kind of stuck with it forever. What's nice about brownfield, and why I like brownfield, is because it's project-specific, and when that developer is paid in full, it's done, right? So there's always an end date, and you're never stuck with it forever, which, I mean, for what it's worth, that's what I like about brownfield as a treasurer. Any other questions for me before I can certainly answer at the end, too?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jill Ferrari. I am one of the five owners of Rennebarre Development. And the reason I'm here tonight and not all five of us or any other of the five is because I've been working in the brownfield program since 1996. I wrote my first brownfield plan in 2000. It was the State Hospital in Traverse City. Was part of that project and have worked on probably over 50, 60 plans in the state of Michigan. So I've watched this program change over the last 25 years, and I'm really excited. This is our first housing TIF plan as well. Anne and Antoni and I were just talking about that. We have chosen on a few other projects to not use this program a few months back because there were too many unanswered questions, but I feel like we're at a good point where there's been enough plans passed. The state has figured out some of its technical issues, that it's a good time to go through the change in the program. So we're excited about taking this leap with you guys. Is it up or down?
Down.
Down. Nope, other way. So, and I apologize, I had done this in Canva, and it did not translate well, so I apologize for some of the glitches and how it's structured. You know the site well. We wanted to just list through, for the new board members, some of the due diligence that's been done on the site. So as Lynn Durant said, we have had this under option for a while. During that time, a site assessment was done, both a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 site assessment were done through the brownfield authority with Anne's help. Fishback completed those analysis. And we did not find, recognize environmental concerns on the site. So even though it was, you know, used for local drop-off, there was a limited area of debris and dumping that was analyzed, and it came back with no hits above residential criteria. So we do not have a facility. We did do a geotechnical analysis through Coleman Engineering, which did actually identify some significant geotechnical issues on the site. We have seven to nine feet of soils that have to be addressed in areas across the site. And I know you've all seen it, it is, has some, you know, serious topographic challenges. And all of the site estimates have been prepared through hall contracting are included as part of the eligible activities. We can talk a little bit about what we're proposing for the site based on those findings. This is the final P U D that was submitted and went through the planning commission analysis. Just for your information, some of the items that were addressed in the preliminary and final P U D were the distance of the units to the sidewalk. There were some concerns in the earlier version of this, that the units were too close to the road, and there wouldn't be enough room for snow storage. So both onsite and offsite snow storage were addressed through the revisions to the plan in the final P U D, as well as stormwater management. So this site has some very unique stormwater management systems that were designed by Brian Sabalenin, who's done a number of stormwater plans in the township. And this is the final version that was approved. It shows the cottages on the western side of the site, and the three-bedroom cottages are interspersed with the two-bedroom cottages. We had all the three beds on the western portion of the site, but it didn't work for access, for fire road access, and for snow storage, so we interspersed some of those units, and this is the final P U D. Then the duplexes are closer to the eastern portion of the site, and finally, with the towns up on the northeastern portion of the site. I think I oriented this right. And please stop me at any time. You don't have to wait till the end. If you have any questions, please stop me right in the middle. These are the elevations and the floor plans that were approved in the final P U D. Cottages up on the left, the duplexes, and then the towns. The cottages, the two-bedroom cottages, two-bedroom duplexes, and the towns are all two beds, bath and a half. They're roughly 950 square feet total. The three beds are close to, closer to 1,200 square feet, excuse me. And the units were initially planned to be on crawl spaces, but we're evaluating that treatment with the geotechnical issues. So we're still working out some technical issues with Barry Polson Associates on, you know, exactly what we're going to do with that geotechnical concern. We may be putting basements in some of the units, in the areas with the deeper areas of fill. And so, but we're, you know, we're working through that right now. This is our current capital stack for the project. We wanted to share this with you. We have tradition, well, there is nothing, traditional single-family construction financing doesn't really exist, especially not for income-restricted or attainable housing. But we are working with a local commercial bank, Nicolay Bank, on construction financing. We received our term sheet from them a few months ago, back in September. They are coming in jointly with Sineer, which is a regional community development financial institution. They work on projects that are workforce housing-related. Those two financial institutions are splitting our main construction financing. And then the special financing we have is a $1.8 million loan from Sineer that will be repaid through the tax increment financing coming from the brownfield plan. So our biggest concern is just making sure that we're capturing enough tax increment on the backend over the life of the plan to repay that $1.8 million loan. That's our concern. It's not getting cash for 30 years. It is just that all, everything that we capture will be deferred to that financial institution to repay that loan. Right now, the amount of Michigan State Housing Development Authority My Neighborhood grant funds, we don't have a final approval on that, but it looks like as of January, we should be able to receive the full amount that we had originally requested, which is 1.3 million. So these numbers are going to change a little bit. Things change constantly until we have final approval on everything, but it looks like we might actually get our full ask at 1.3 million. And as those numbers change, we can update you. And then the last piece is private equity that is coming through us and our partners to the project. We are also applying for the Build UP program, which you've all heard of. It is a program through Invest UP where they provide cash collateral for financing for single-family homes. So this, we don't actually see this money or touch this money. It actually is an arrangement between Invest UP and Nicolay Bank, where Invest UP puts money aside so that Nicolay Bank can finance deals like this. We will be the first single-family construction financing for Nicolay Bank. It took us about 10, 11 months to go through underwriting with them, to get them comfortable with a single-family deal. And we're finally at that point. So we're very excited to have them at the table as a local bank. Nope. Just a couple projects that we have in our pipeline right now. I didn't include projects that we have finished. I'm sure some of you probably remember that my partner, Shannon Morgan, was the lead on the Grandview Marquette project up the road and finished that project with her team. I only put projects in here that we're currently working on. And that includes Dorsey Estates, which is a 46-unit project in Ypsilanti. Those are, those construction pictures are actually a couple of months old. We're now selling units. These units are roughly the same size, cottages, duplexes, and towns. And, but the income targeting is much deeper. This is a very complicated project. And on top of fill, we had eight to nine feet of fill across the site. We found hits of mercury and other contaminants that required us to pretty much scrape this entire site clean. It's been a very challenging project, but we're actually at sale, which is very exciting. This capital stack is much more complicated than the one I just showed you. There's about 12 sources in this capital stack.
Good lord, I'm so sorry. Not able to do this well.
Other projects that we're working on right now, we have a 71-unit project in Harper Woods, where we're partnering with Robertson Homes. Robertson is one of the biggest home builders in the state of Michigan. We are partners on it, we're 50-50 partners. This is targeted at 120% of area median income and below. This is closing right now. It requires the demolition of a school building that had been closed by the local school district after restructuring. Project T in Benton Harbor is a three-phase project. We are a 50-50 partner with Harbor Habitat. This is all, this is a former hospital site, also contaminated with about four feet of fill on it. And we're actually in final closing calls with our lenders on that deal as well. And M Village in Grand Rapids is a partnership with Messiah Baptist Church, which is one of the largest black Baptist churches in Grand Rapids. That's a smaller project with only 20 units of single-family for sale housing. Oh, my goodness. There we go. And then we have our two projects up here in the UP that I'm sure you've all heard of, Immunity Marketplace and the Fire Hall. We have been working on both of these projects since 2000, I believe, 2000. We had a full-deal package with a new market tax credit for Immunity Marketplace. And at the very end of that project, we lost our gap financing. It was very heartbreaking, and we've had to completely restructure that deal. We've pulled a local advisory committee together with the DDA, the city, the county, State Land Bank, MISTDA, to figure out how to restructure that site. It has been redesigned, and we are submitting for our transformational brownfield plan this week, actually, right now, to M E D C for a restructure on that deal. It's now, it was 39 units originally. It's gone down to 32 units with a smaller commercial footprint on the main floor. But we are going to be heading into, you know, full financing mode on that deal now that we've been invited to submit for the transformational brownfield. And that includes both sites, that and the Fire Hall will be included in the transformational brownfield. And the other, the last project is Project T. It's just the second phase of that deal in Benton Harbor. We have a mixed-use deal there as well. Just wanted to kind of let you know what our world looks like right now. Our partners have committed or completed projects all over the state, ranging from low-income housing tax credit deals to brownfield, they've done some of the largest brownfields in the state, including the Northville Psychiatric Hospital, the State Hospital, and Traverse City and more. So we're experienced. We know there's been a delay in getting to this point. Our biggest issue, and I'm going to go back if I can. Our biggest issue has been that gap from the My Neighborhood program. We had submitted in the first round last year, thought we were actually going to get an approval, and we didn't. And it's delayed us about nine months. And then also, working on the construction financing up here for single-family has been a little bit challenging. We haven't found a lot of banks that are really interested in single-family. It took a long time to get Nicolay comfortable with the structure. So we know there's been a delay, but all the pieces are finally in place. If we can get this award from MISTDA in January for Missing Middle and other funds that I think they're bringing to the table to meet our 1.3 million, the brownfield plan is going to be the last piece. So thank you for being patient with us and working through all of this with us. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have, and we can start talking about any, you know, intricate details in the plan that you have questions on.
Does anyone have any questions for me?
I want to recap some of it, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Our job, as you know, is to be the trustees of the finances of the township. So that's where my focus fits in. Obviously, you've done an exceptional job in some of your other communities of making this work. I don't know what that means for them as far as what they've had to give up or contribute, but this is our concern, especially being 30 years. This is huge, because none of us are going to be here, I don't think. So how much of 13 million is loans?
The construction financing is loans. The TIF, the 1.8 million are loans. So in my head, that's about 12 million, 11.8 in loans.
Is there a chance that before this is done, you might lose some more funding? If you missed one bucket already, that would delay it even further?
I mean, I want to be honest. I mean, there's always a chance that things go sideways. I mean, we've learned that pretty painfully. From the construction financing side, we're in constant contact with Sineer because they're financing a part of our deal in Harper Woods. I don't see any concern there. Nicolay seemed very, you know, committed with their term sheet, unless there's some financial issue with them. You know, I don't foresee anything happening. It would really just be if something went sideways and we couldn't get all of the My Neighborhood or whatever MISTDA is coming to the table with at the end of January, that would be the biggest risk. And I can't, I don't know. We had a very productive call today, and we're told that they're packaging the full 1.3 for us.
Could you get more from them, then? Could they change some mine and?
So each source of funds has its own parameters and restrictions, and the more of that money that we take, the, there's limits on how many, how much each developer can get. We did also receive a My Neighborhood Award for Grand Rapids. And between the two projects, we are capped at the level for us as a developer at 2 million, because we got a $700,000 award in Grand Rapids. If there were another program down the road, could we add this to the project if we needed to? It's definitely a possibility. It's just, you guys know, it's so few and far between that you get housing funded. This is, so when Missing Middle started up here, two years, it was like the first time that housing money came to the UP. This is, this is an era, an unprecedented era of money for housing in the Upper Peninsula. It just doesn't happen. So I think it will be available until it's not. And so, I don't know.
So you're responsible for paying back loans of about 12 million. And that's where, if you can explain how the township is going to pay for that a little bit better.
Oh, no, no, no.
I mean, the township as a whole with our TIF.
Sure. The 12 million in loans, we take those out at construction, we complete the homes and sell the homes. The sales proceeds that come in from selling the homes will pay back the loans. At the end of this project, after two years, all of the loans will be repaid except for the TIF loan. The 1.8 million loan will still be outstanding. We will defer, if we go through this brownfield process and it's approved and we sign a reimbursement agreement with the township and the county, we will, that capture will come in, and we will defer that payment to the bank. It will go straight to the bank. And that will happen until the loan, or for the life of the plan, or until the loan is repaid, whichever happens first.
So it's feasible, then, that if we had exceptional development in the township, that it could be put out sooner?
Yes, we were actually talking about that today, about whether the lending institution would allow a prepayment. I have to go back to my term sheet with Sineer and see, but it's definitely something to discuss.
I don't imagine it would be more than a few years, anyway. What's the difference between the 25-year and the 30-year? Because there's two numbers on here.
Yeah, I was actually going to explain that. So with brownfield, you can only go 30 years. And at the end, well, I say at the end of every brownfield plan, because that's the way we've done it. The local brownfield authority can capture five years by statute. In some, I know in the city of Marquette, sometimes they capture that throughout the plan, which reduces the amount that goes to the developer. We've always done it at the end. But it is something for you to look at when you look at the tables, when we eventually bring it to you. bring it to you. It's, it's going to be a chunk of money. It's five years, what did I have up on the screen that you're generating per year, that goes to the brownfield authority, and the intent is funding so that we can keep doing these projects and maybe someday not come to the township and be able to support it on our own. We are a new authority, so we have about sixty grand right now, and that's it, to offer to Marquette County for doing brownfield work, site assessment work, what have you. The city of Marquette has a lot more, because they've done larger plans and they've collected, they've been around a lot longer than us, so they've collected that local brownfield contribution. But a lot of our plans are ten to fifteen years out in the future before we're gonna see any of that. We would like to get that full five years, but it is a negotiable thing. If the township says, geez, you know, that's a lot of money, and, you know, that would be something for you to ask the brownfield to consider is shortening that. We're gonna try to get the full five years as much as we can, just to support our program.
And that's roughly five-hundred thousand?
Well, in our current draft, I wanna say it was like a million over the five years.
Just for the brownfield?
It was a big number, so I'll be curious, once we get things, what that ends up being, but it's definitely something that you should pay attention to and, and give us that feedback.
Okay, so then when does Rent-A-Bari get their money? I mean, obviously, you're gonna do this for profit of some sort.
So, but we, yeah, sure. We are, and we consider ourselves a social impact, commercial real estate development company. Our developer fees are usually under ten percent. Some deals are lower, some deals are higher. Right now, we're somewhere between three and five percent on this deal. This is not a huge moneymaker for us. The way this works is, just as I said, we come in at closing with all the funds that are listed, the construction gets paid for, and then the sales proceeds start coming in. The sales proceeds come in, Nicolay and Senor get paid back first. They start getting money as soon as sales start coming in, so we're carrying a low balance, it's like a revolving loan, right? So we've got money out from them, but sales are coming in, and we're paying that balance down each month as sales occur. After Nicolay and Ba, and Senor are paid back, our internal investors get repaid in the, for that one-point-two-million in equity. What's left after that from the sales proceeds, because there's no other money coming in the deal, it's just the sales, but right, this isn't like a long-term rental where you have cash flow every year, it's a one-shot deal. The remaining sales proceeds pay our developer fee. But all we have left after paying back the initial debt and the equity is about five percent, three to five percent right now.
Okay.
So the TIF is really intended to fund the gap, right? So like Jill said, their sales proceeds are gonna come in and pay those construction loans. That TIF, the amount the township and the county are contributing to this project is willing to fund that gap to allow for this housing to be built. So it's kind of, it, it's really, it's a, it's a way for you to locally use your tax increment to incentivize housing, because otherwise, a developer's not gonna make any money on this project. I mean, that's the best way I can describe it.
And at the end, we walk away, all the units are sold, they're in new homeowner's title, the, they pay their taxes, they move forward, they pay their taxes, everything gets collected by Ann and her team as it's collected each year, and it's verified against the qualified expenditures in the plan, and we go through that process to certify the expenses. All that money gets paid back to the lender who made that one-point-eight-million-dollar loan until it's repaid, or for the life of the plan, whatever's less.
And when the plan comes to you, you will see that by year, who's getting what. It'll show the TIF, what's generated at the top, and then who's getting what. So there's a, just to give you an example, the beginning years, the brownfield authority gets reimbursed for that Phase One environmental assessment that we did, right? So we get that at the beginning, there's an administrative fee. It's higher in the early years, because there's a lot of work up front for me to go through and verify invoices and do all of that. I think we have it going down to a thousand dollars a year thereafter for the life of the plan. Otherwise, it's just developer reimbursement. But it'll show you, when you see those tables, it'll show you by year what's coming in and who it's going out to each year, so you can see that.
So how can you say that the township doesn't lose anything? Where was that in there? If John Smith came in and wrote us a check for the property tomorrow and said he wanted to put up a grocery store or something, we would get taxes, obviously, based on the twelve-thirty-one, whatever the condition of the property or the building is at the end of the year, and then reassessed. So we've got money coming in, just like any other property. So you're telling us that the five-hundred-thousand dollars that we get for the sale of the property is what gets taxed for the next thirty years. How much of that difference, because the taxes everybody's gonna be paying with this list of who you picked out, is gonna go to them or the banks, right?
Yes, and, and the, the five-hundred thousand would be, I mean, the, the value of the land will be included in that. Because this is municipally owned right now, the entire tax increment will be captured for, to support the brownfield plan. But to your question of, you know, what if, right? That's always the question. What if you did something else? What if you didn't do this? What if you sold it to somebody and they sat on it for the next thirty years? I had that number, I just saw it, it's like twenty-seven-hundred dollars. I wrote it down because I thought, twenty-two-eighty-seven, I thought you might ask. So twenty-two-eighty-seven is roughly what you would collect as the township on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar taxable value, which is half of the five-hundred thousand. Yeah. Now, if somebody comes along and builds a grocery store, yes, you would get that millage, and if, and if you did this instead of that, you would be giving up that millage from that grocery store. It kind of boils down, what do you wanna see on that site? Do you wanna see a grocery store, or do you wanna see attainable housing?
That, that was gonna be my question for the board, too, is are we willing to sacrifice possibly millions over the next thirty years for financing whatever we need in the township to put up housing? That's gotta be the question, because if, in five years, when all of those homes are sold and people start selling them, we still don't recoup any of that, do we? It's going toward the debt, whatever the debt is.
The way it's, we talked about that a little bit today, actually. The way the plan is structured now, no. And this kind of gets back to that, I said at the beginning, I wanted to get your feedback on that affordability period. Because if these homes are only guaranteed to be attainably priced for five years, and John Smith, who bought that home, sells it in year six, and he has no restriction on who he sells it to, that two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar home that he bought, he might sell for three-fifty. And you saw what's selling, I mean, you know what's selling, right? So one question is, are you comfortable with that, knowing that these are only gonna be attainably priced for five years? You might say, no, I'm not comfortable about that, but on the other side, you'd rather get the taxes from that higher amount, assuming that your assessor is gonna follow suit and assess it that way, which is a good, a good question for Dulce. But, yeah, I, I do wanna get kind of feedback on that attainability. This, the same thing, I think, has come up with Antonio's conversations in the city of Marquette, is how do we know if we support this, we're doing this because we're supporting attainable housing? If it's only gonna be attainable for, housing for five years, what is that really, is that really achieving the goal that you were hoping for?
But then again, what happens to that money? The difference, they sell it for extra hundred thousand.
In theory, the developer would get reimbursed faster.
That's what I was thinking, that's why I asked about being able to pay it off sooner.
Yes.
And that, that is the question that we need to have with the lender. We talked about this earlier, if we can prepay that loan quicker, then yes.
And not have any fees.
Yeah, exactly. It cuts down our capture period and everything else goes to the township back and out.
So what's different with this because we own the property? Anything?
Different in that it's starting at a zero taxable value. So there, I mean, that's great for the developer, because it's a higher amount to capture. Other than that?
So what if...
You're in control, to some degree, in what you wanna see in the purchase agreement. You know, and that was one of the questions that I had for you, and is the timing? Because I've heard, you know, concerns about how long this is taking. I don't know, I, I'm not here to give you legal advice, that's what you have Roger for, but, you know, is there a way for you to look at that purchase agreement and kind of hold their feet to the fire to get the development that you want in a period of time? I don't know, I'm not an attorney. In the same way, there will be a development reimbursement agreement with the brownfield authority that we need to consider and make sure that everything is working the way that we want it to work.
So do we, to back up again, I guess, if we have two-year rec. millage we wanna do, or the DDA decides they wanna do, well, I guess it wouldn't apply to the DDA. But anyway, let's say a rec. millage or fire, you know, we wanna increase, not the assessment, but their equipment millage, are we even gonna get any of that?
Not on this project, not if it's voted in after the brownfield plan is adopted, but it's gonna make your brownfield plan get paid off quicker. It's gonna shorten that timeframe, because it was a millage that you weren't expecting. And we guess, you know, we estimate on taxable value increases throughout the plan, I can't remember the percentage that was used. Sometimes it's higher, or sometimes it's, I mean, it's all, it's all kind of a projection at this point in time. Thirty years is a long time to guess at what's gonna happen. You would benefit, you know, these plans are benefiting from the ISD millage. It was two mills, right? Extra voted that they voted in a couple of years ago. All my brownfield plans are gonna benefit from that, because that's millage we didn't count out, so it might not even be you, it might be another taxing jurisdiction.
Very complicated. Questions? Gotta be something you're not clear on. John?
I feel like we're at the eleventh hour on this one. They have a final PUD plan approved by our planning commission, so it's up to you to decide if you're willing to commit to the next step, which is what they need to do to justify a three to five percent profit, right? That's the nuts and bolts of it. If, if you're scared of a thirty-year TIF, now's probably the time to let Jill know before they invest any more money in this project. That's my opinion. Actually, it probably should have happened before the first extension was even requested. That's, that's just the harsh reality of it from, from the agreement perspective that we've been pushing for.
We definitely want that feedback tonight, yeah, for sure. Well, thank you.
Roger?
Who is going to be expected to put the TIF plan together?
They have hired somebody to do that, and then we have also paid our consultant to review it. So we actually two people.
The last time we did, we've done minor amendments, but our plans were always put together by bond consultant.
Well, yeah, most of our brownfield plans have been put together by our brownfield consultant, who was Fishback. And in this case, it wasn't ours, so we contracted with them to just overview it and look it over with me. So we've been kind of working all of us together on it.
Long as it's not me.
They're very, they're very big spreadsheets.
So how does the April tenth deadline look? Let's say we approved you tonight, which we can't do, but...
Yeah. So this process is going to take a few more steps. We have to go back and forth and come to an agreement on the final tables. We've gotta go back to the brownfield authority, we have to come back here, we have to go to the county. There's also the issue of the DDA, and it was brought to, I forget who brought it to our attention, but there is a DDA, I think it's still active. We have to, if it is, there's a website. We have to sign and enter a local agreement with the DDA.
I thought we determined we didn't have to do that, because they're not capturing, they're not capturing anything, they're just levying millage.
Okay, all right, I apologize.
We went around and around on it, but I think...
I wanna make sure you're okay with that.
Our very intelligent consultants decided we didn't need to do that, but...
Our TIF capture ended in two thousand and four, if I recall correctly. We extended it from, for two years, from two thousand and two to two thousand and four, there's been no capturing. We have no TIF, but we do have an active DDA, and they levy millage.
And those two mills are included in the plan, so this plan would be capturing those two mills.
It's currently one mill for two years, and we're just collecting the second year.
Well, so that's something that we have to figure out, if, we don't have to do in our lo, we do...
I lied, we have that one.
Yeah, we do enter local agreements all the time, but we just need to settle that. So to your question, Lynn, I think it depends on how many meetings we have to get through to get to approval. If we get board approval by Mishta in January, they have been very quick about turning around grant agreements. Our, our Missing Middle grant agreements were signed very quickly. We're through final PUD, there's still some engineering that needs to be done, it's gonna come down to the banks and how long it's gonna take them to close. I will tell you that the, the CDFIs have been a little slower than we like to see. Some of our other closings are taking a little bit longer, so I don't know that April tenth is, that we're gonna be able to close by April tenth. We have a lot of public meetings to get through, but I think we'll be well on our way. We should be through underwriting at that point, and at least, you know, two public meetings into the brownfield process, I would hope, by then.
John?
So in response to that, I feel like the last time this board considered a six-month extension or whatever, whatever it's called technically, there was a little more angst than the first one. So that's the other thing you need to be considering, is if for some reason you've now drawn a line in the sand that you don't wanna cross, and they can't do it before, say, let's call it June, I'm just picking a date, what does that mean to you? Are you going to let them get that far only to find out that they missed your last deadline that you're willing to work with them on? So you'll have to decide that, too. I think getting to a final PUD is a pretty big deal, having the funding stack get this far is a pretty big deal. I don't even wanna know what kind of effort it takes to do that, because it's not something I wanna touch. It's a serious decision, you have to decide how important this housing is to the community at the loss of potential revenue for a parcel that's laid dormant longer than I've been here.
Go ahead, Lynn.
So, so we did a master plan, or we're completing a master plan, we did a survey, and I think housing was one of the top items, people wanted. And I think the people that were surveyed are the people that are the Missing Middle people. They weren't the people that are high earners, they weren't our low earners, they have housing. It's our Missing Middle that wanna live in Marquette and work in Marquette. And so I, I agree, it's a piece of property that's sat vacant, and it's not really been marketed for the last, all the years I've been on the board, four.
Few years, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just that, and we've gotten zero for it. Other than, we've probably paid for it because we keep grading that road, or whatever we're doing, there's still holes in it.
It will save us money in maintenance costs.
Yeah, and I really do think the people spoke when they did the survey. And the other thing is, the first house many of us purchased was a thirty-year mortgage, and we were willing to do that, and we didn't know if we were gonna be here in thirty years.
You can't compare that, we've gotta think of the whole township.
I am thinking, I am thinking of the whole township. I am, Lynn.
But that's our choice, if we wanna take on a thirty-year mortgage. You can't make the comparison, but anyway.
I can make the comparison, and I just did, and it's okay to do that. Thank you.
Your opinion, okay. Anything on this side? Questions?
Well, if, if the project is valued at fourteen million dollars, if the taxable value will be seven million dollars, what is our rate of, that we're paying that would be... what is our rate of, that we're paying that would be captured?
The, the milledage rate? I don't have that in front of me. And it's about six, because some of that 14 doesn't, doesn't, right? So our, we're looking at a TV of a little over six.
I think we estimated at the end it would be 11. Am I remembering that right?
At the end of 30 years?
Oh, what happened? I don't know where I did.
You hit a different button, probably.
Yeah, probably.
If there's a particular slide you want to get to, I could probably...
No, because I have it printed here, so I'll just find it. I think the...
You mean each year, what is the milledage rate?
Yeah, just roughly, because if, you know, if the lot was vacant, left vacant, we'd only get $22,000, $23,000 over 30 years.
$2,300.
$2,300. So what would we get, you know, what, what is the amount being captured each year?
Oh, at the end of the plan, I had calculated that to be $190,000. That's all your milledage is. So that's DDA, law enforcement, fire, road, library, township tax. So that's at the very end, when you start capturing on this project again, what you would take in. Yeah, so it's again, it's a, it's a delayed, it's a delayed... I hate to say, when people say, "Oh, we're giving up all that tax revenue." Well, you're not, because you're not recognizing it now. You're delaying that tax revenue to support this project. You're actually investing in it with your township tax revenue, so that you can get to that higher amount 30 years from now. It's really a local investment. Some say the most powerful local investment tool that you have available to you.
I didn't find the right slide.
Who else?
You were almost out.
Clear as mud. So it's not only a financial decision, it's a philosophical decision to, to figure out if this is what we want to support.
Yeah, I mean, and it really boils down to, like you said, what do you want to see on that site? I think your planning commission has agreed that they like this use of the site. And then it's a matter of, do you think you could find another developer to come along and invest this and create that kind of tax base without the incentive?
If it's housing.
If it's housing that you want, right, you know? It's a little bit of a roll of the dice.
And we've said that, we've said that we want to focus on housing. Linda's absolutely right. You know, we did this a few years ago with our master plan and the survey. And they said roads and recreation, so that's what we did. Seven million dollars for roads. I mean, they're paying for it, but that was the commitment we made.
And, and I know, I mean, TIF is a difficult concept to explain to the public, and that doesn't make your jobs easy. You know, and so when you want to try to answer that question, "Well, why, why are you focusing on this project? Why are you giving up tax revenue?" I mean, I really do think that answer is, "We're not giving it up, we don't have it yet. We're not generating anything," to your point, "We're not generating anything right now."
John?
There are a few revenue streams that this project wouldn't touch as far as harming the township from that perspective. Utility rates, garbage fees, Act 33, which is the special assessment, if I got the right act. Too many acts in my head some days. Those kinds of things, so your basic daily services, which is your water and sewer maintenance, your fire calls, a lot of those things will still be covered. Will your administrative costs in taxing those parcels every year be covered? I don't know if I like TIFs or not personally. But I feel like we've gone pretty far down this path. We're, we really are at the 11th hour. So if, if the township wants to continue down this path, they need to know it, or they may not come back.
So are we at the point where we need to put this on the January 15th agenda? To have some kind of a decision so we can move forward?
I would say we should wait, well, I, I, yeah, I don't, maybe I shouldn't say, but in my world, my next step is to bring this plan to the Brownfield Authority. And I don't feel, I mean, I felt even just a little funny bringing you like a draft plan tonight, because I'd rather show you the real numbers, but we're not there yet. I, I would suggest waiting until the Brownfield Authority approves the plan, so that you have the actual numbers in front of you to look at as of...
It'll be more difficult to...
And if it takes you two meetings, it takes you two meetings, that's okay. I mean, we can work that into the schedule.
I was just trying to figure out the chronology of what happens when.
Are you looking at sometime in February, then?
Do you think we can get it before the February, February meeting?
I think we only have two questions to answer, and then we will have updates to the TIF table. So I think, and the MISTHA meeting is, she gave us a date, it's January 23rd. So, you should have all our answers by the, yeah, the 23rd.
And you're welcome to come to the Brownfield Authority meeting as well. That's, I don't have the date, it's the, it's the second Monday of each month, so whatever that second Monday in February is at 4 o'clock. Welcome to come, I know Lynn came to the last one.
February 10th.
February 10th. Thank you.
3, 3rd?
That'll give you a chance to see the tables and kind of, I mean, your eyes might glaze over, but you'll, you know, you'll at least be able to see those tables and the numbers and really hear the consultants talk about it, and that might be valuable to you.
I think that the biggest concern for us, and what we want to continue discussion on before we get too far down the road, to John's point, is the period of affordability. When we were brought here to look at the project, the parameters were clear that it was to develop workforce housing. But we never really finalized with all of you how long it should be affordable. And I think we were asked questions by Mr. Ferrer and others about, you know, how we would secure affordability, and our answer was always, "It's going to depend on financing." Because if we have a financing piece that requires long-term affordability, it's going to need to match that. Well, at the end of the day, now that we have our capital stack, our affordability requirements are only five years in, in the financing. And the Brownfield program, this new housing TIF, which everyone's trying to figure out, and feel free to correct me at any time, Ann, the statute allows the local jurisdiction to define the term of affordability. It does not, it does not say that it has to be affordable the length of the Brownfield plan. It really leaves it up to the local unit of government. So that is the one thing that Shannon and I really wanted to make sure that we brought to your attention tonight, that it is our proposal that that affordability matched the financing requirements of five years. And that after that, it would uncap, and as they sold, the additional increment could either pay down the loan, or, you know, we've negotiated other circumstances with other units of government, where we take the amount that we need for our debt service and you keep the rest. We can, we can negotiate all of that. But that length of affordability is really a critical piece that we need to understand pretty quickly. Because we're very concerned about selling units that have a 30-year affordability restriction. And we don't think that those will sell, based on our market research here up in Marquette. So, it's something that we need to work out very quickly.
Seems reasonable, yeah.
There's pros and cons to however you approach it, right? The longer you put the affordability requirement on there, the longer it takes to repay back the TIF. If it's five years and it, the house is flipped and reassessed, theoretically, the TIF should be paid back quicker. And that would be what I would hope would be the goal, because you still have the TIF, or the Brownfield Authority that needs to collect at the end. So the quicker you get through them, too, the quicker you get your money.
The other thing that I worry about, and Antonio, our housing specialist, can jump up and tell me this, be quiet. How do we really know what's going to be happening in five years, right?
We don't.
Like, are we going to hit a bubble where all these projects that he's working so hard on have created all these units to where the market is going to regulate those prices? That people aren't going to be able to flip them at $350,000? We just don't know. So to some degree, to try to guess what the environment and the landscape is going to be in five years is, I don't know. But that's just my opinion.
I'll jump in on something separate that was discussed here, real quick. Lynn, you asked about any advantages that the municipality may have in the situation. And you do have one that we haven't really talked about, or hasn't barely really fully been explored, in my opinion. So we, we as a county convened a study, where we identified 16 sites throughout the county that would be viable for development, right? It has infrastructure ready to go, close by, nearby, et cetera. With the purchase agreement option that you've discussed at $500,000, typically, like, they're at an advantage in the driver's seat, because it is considered a really healthy amount, is 10% or less of their capital stack. So in theory, with the $13 million plus development, you're looking at a $1.3 million tag that they could spend up to, in theory. They far exceed that, and they're probably at 30 or 40% of the value. So if you really wanted to drive this, critical piece of this creativity negotiating further along, you could not suggestion this right now, or tonight, but somebody considers that, you could drop that price and say, "Well, if we want a length of plan that's not 30 years, and we're willing to do a 25, or 20, or 15, or 10-year plan, that's one of the ways that you can chop this in half and say, "Well, maybe this, in theory, can go by a dollar." Not something I'm suggesting, but you could also kind of figure that out, too, because that's, you want to jumpstart this development, you know, with a, with a really heavy set of incentives to make it really go faster, so that you can predict some of these results. It's, is it a stick build or modular build? You know, that's another...
It's modular, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up, because I didn't cover that. And I, you know what, we did actually make this arrangement in Ypsilanti. Our income targeting there was originally 60 to 120, but the city of Ypsilanti needed a few deeper income targeting units, so they dropped the purchase price in exchange for us doing four 40% AMI units, which I do not suggest. They're very difficult to sell, very, it's really hard. But it was something that they were very passionate about, something that they really needed to do. So they did exactly what Antonio was suggesting. Yes, it is a modular build through Champion. We have our pricing, our floor plans through Champion. It'll be coming from the Indiana plant. Our goal is to do two tranches of 24 units, and have them set with local teams up here, and Hall Contracting is managing everything up here, as well as Innovalab, which is a group that's been up here in your area managing some other magical projects.
Just gets more and more, just more information as you keep talking.
So what is the total that we, that is going to be captured? Do we know that number yet? I'm not sure it was on the different slide.
Yeah, I think it's on the one right before this.
$1.8 million, or?
Oh, wrong way. Yeah, right there, the 5.9. Yeah, so roughly $6 million.
Based on 30 years?
Yes. That number could be tweaked.
Anything else? County chair would not like this going on this long.
Jerry?
He likes...
Or Joe?
Joe. He likes short meetings, and we were teasing about...
Oh, the meeting! I thought you meant the Brownfield plan.
Oh, no, sorry.
No, that's okay.
We were teasing about letting, letting the board talk and think, you know.
Well, I, for what it's worth, I think this was a really good idea and a great way to handle it. Because it is a lot. And it's a lot to consider in one meeting. So doing it this way, I think, was a good idea. So thank you for, and I'm happy also to answer questions. If you think of something, don't call me in the middle of the night, but if you think of something late at night, want to call me the next day, I'm happy to answer any questions after the fact, too.
Okay. All right, well, we can have public comment, so anybody wants to, maybe they've got some questions.
I just, let me make a quick comment. I'm Danny Ferraro, 238 East Nest Road, and I'm also a member of the planning commission. And we've interacted with Renovari as a planning commission for the last two years, and we, and Linda can attest to this, we very thoroughly, and we approached it with some skepticism, but we were, I think, totally satisfied with the professionalism and with the plan. And, but I think what drove us was this need for housing here in this community. And in terms of the capture of money and taxes and so forth, this is, you know, a little bit above my head, but one thing that I think you might want to consider is, and we've seen this in terms of the developers that have come in, and the various businesses that have come in, that we've approved different plans for in the planning commission, they need people to work in their enterprises. So you are going to generate economic wealth by investing in this type of housing. So I think you will see a, a, a great payback in terms of economic benefit for the township. And also, this township is a beautiful township, and it has a great government. And this, in this environment, we can be a leader in this. We can be an example for other units of government to do. So, anyway, but I think you're all doing a great job, and thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Good perspective. Anybody else? Share any thoughts? Okay, I guess we're good.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate you coming, I know you had to travel to get here.
It wasn't bad at all.
That's not it for me.
Had to be here.
28. We are adjourned.